Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the July 14th, 2014 meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Dr. Mohamed Musri. Dr. Musri is the president and senior Imam of the Islamic Society of Central Florida, which serves approximately 40,000 Muslims. Imam Musri is active in the interfaith work and public service and is a member of the Interfaith Council of Central Florida's Advisory Board. He's also one of the three wise guys on the Orlando-based public radio program Friends Talking Faith. After the invocation will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance offered today by District Two Commissioner Tony Ortiz. If we could all please stand.
Oh God of all creation, we begin our meeting today by giving you honor and praise. You are worthy of all praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. God, we thank you for our mayor, the honorable Buddy Dyer, the commissioners, and all those who gather here today to do the important business of our beautiful city. We thank you for, we ask you for your hand of blessing on all of them in this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct their hearts and minds so that this meeting is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping them to accomplish their work and their goals this day. Oh God, please continue to bless our beautiful city and all of its inhabitants with safety, health, and prosperity. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now take up the minutes from the agenda review and city council meetings of June the 23rd, 2014. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Right into awards and presentations. So Alan Johnson, our Orlando venues executive director, you're on.
Thank you, good afternoon, mayors, city commissioners, audience members, and those on the world wide web. It's a pleasure to be here today to talk about a topic that is near and dear to our heart and my heart, especially about five years ago when Ron Legler approached us about becoming partners on the Orlando Broadway series, Fair Winds and Florida Theatrical. And it was such a good idea that we accepted it, the council approved it, and for the last three years we've averaged about, we made 4.5 million, so about a million and five a year is what that contract has brought to our Bob Car operating budget, and we really appreciate that. Today, we're here to talk about the last season, and Larry Watchorn, the managing director of Florida Theatrical Association, is here to tell us about that. Larry?
Welcome, Larry.
Thank you. Mayor Dyer, city commissioners, I'm here along with Wendy Connor, president of True Marketing and Artful Events, our staffs, and also Larry Tobin and Phil Tisher from Fair Winds. And Ron Legler is watching on the world wide web, too, so hi to Ron. We all thank you for your time today. Like Ron Legler, Wendy and I understand the importance of creating partnerships and working toward a common goal. And FTA would not be what it is today without the partnerships we have with the city of Orlando, with Fair Winds, with True Marketing, Artful Events, and Broadway Across America. It's because of these partnerships that we are able to be in front of you all today to present your share of the presenting profits for the 2013-14 Fair Winds Broadway Across America Orlando season. And I'm happy to say that it's the largest amount in the five years of the contract, and an increase of 55 percent from last season. So we proudly present to you this check for $316,346.49.
Okay, Marcia, I think you're next up with the other presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and commissioners, and everyone watching, whether here in the room or on the world wide web. Hi, Ron. We are glad that you're here today, and we are glad to be presenting information on some of our outstanding arts education programs in the city of Orlando. I know that some of us are aware, but not everyone may be aware, that we have internationally and nationally recognized programs that our young people, our students, our children, are having the benefit of here in Orlando. Two of them, which we are going to recognize today, are the Orlando Ballet School, and I'll let them tell you about the international recognition that they have received, and also A Gift for Music, which has received a first-time national recognition here in Orlando. So at this time, I'd like to bring up a couple of folks who are really very responsible, actually, three people, that are really responsible for this. We'd like to start with Jim Mitchell, who is our new executive director at the Orlando Ballet, who I think is going to introduce Dee Dee, who is the director of the wonderful school. And then after that, I'd like to have Eric Smith come up and tell you a little bit about the national recognition for A Gift for Music. And we're going to start with Jim.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. I am a five-week resident of Orlando, Florida.
You're welcome.
Yes, I do have an accent. I'm from northwest Arkansas. It'll go away eventually. Well, it hasn't in several decades. I'm thrilled to be here. I am particularly thrilled to be here because I was just talking with the mayor and expressing the fact that this is one of the few communities in four states that I've worked in, in over 30 years in arts management, where the city gets it and understands that the arts can be in community and partnership in terms of economic development, education, social services, all of those arenas. The other reason I took this job is because Orlando Ballet understands that and gets it and has demonstrated it repeatedly, and we're going to continue that commitment. You will see that on several fronts with the Lock Haven Project. I was particularly thrilled to see that part of that agreement is that we have a commitment with the city to continue those community events at that location, and there's more to come. I personally am particularly thrilled that we're going to have the opportunity to work and perform in the new Dr. Phillips Center for the Arts across the street. It didn't get much better than that. As a show of our commitment to the community, we have some folks here representing the various components of our organization. I just want to stand real quickly. I'm not going to introduce them individually, but we have some board members. If you all would stand, please. We have some representatives of our professional company. And last but not least, and probably most importantly, we have some students from our school. If they would stand for us, please. These last two sets are not just our future, they're your future, and we need to invest in them. They do an incredible job. Our school director, which is why we are here today, is going to tell you about some of that. We have one of the best schools and training programs in the world in this community, and I want everyone in this room to be proud of it, and I want you to come buy a ticket and come see us. I want to introduce Deirdre Milesberger, the director of our school, who will tell you some of the incredible achievements we've had over the past year or two. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for this recognition. We truly appreciate it so very, very much. Orlando Ballet School at the Youth American Grand Prix, which is the largest student scholarship competition internationally, this year at the New York finals was awarded outstanding school for 2014. It's only awarded to one school internationally, and we were selected, which was a huge honor. And being selected for this honor in the company of so many other wonderful schools that exist in the world was truly incredible, particularly in such a challenging year. It's all a part of my wonderful faculty that I have, exceptional teachers, wonderful students, and a wonderful professional company that backs us up and gives us a shining example every day. And to Mr. Hill, Mr. Robert Hill, our artistic director, who leads us. So it is indeed a great honor, and to be recognized by Mayor Dyer and the commissioners in this way is greatly appreciated, and I truly thank you, and I, on behalf of the entire organization, thank all of you for supporting us and for the incredible support you've given us in so many ways this year. Thank you.
The mayor is going to join you all for a picture. And Mayor, this is the announcement that we see here at the Orlando Ballet School International. Please join the mayor, everyone who's here with the ballet, please. And at this time, Eric Smith will join us to tell us about a great national recognition of A Gift for Music.
Thank you, Marcia. Thank you, Mayor, and city commissioners for recognizing A Gift for Music and A Gift for Teaching during this exciting time for our program. Just to let you know what's happened, in May, A Gift for Music was selected as one of the 50 finalists for a National Arts and Humanities Youth Programs Award. A Gift for Music was among 360 nominations received nationwide, and we've been distinguished as a finalist for the nation's highest honor for arts and humanities youth programs. A Gift for Music was the only program in Florida to receive the distinction this year, and we're the first arts education program ever in the city of Orlando to have received this distinction. We anxiously await for the 12 final winners to be selected. If we are chosen, we'll travel to Washington, DC to receive a $10,000 check and an award from Michelle Obama. Nearly 15 years ago, the sounds of violins and cellos echoed through this city hall as 20 enthusiastic A Gift for Music students performed for visitors and city staff. Since that day, we've mentored over 8,000 urban and low-income students in the city, helping them envision a better future for themselves while exploring their own musical creativity. Some of these students are here today. If you're a student with A Gift for Music, stand up. Let's give them a round of applause, please. Thank you. Some of these students have already accomplished incredible things, from writing songs that have swept through radio stations in South America, to earning full-ride college scholarships in biomedical engineering. These students don't just play their instruments with great confidence, they defy the at-risk label their community has given them. Their creative minds cultivated by their music education will propel them to success in an economy driven by innovation. On behalf of all of A Gift for Music students, parents, and staff, thank you for inviting us and recognizing this program today. We really appreciate it.
And Mayor Dyer will present the letter to Eric. Join the mayor for a photograph. Parents, you're welcome to join them, too. Yes, of course.
We generally don't allow texting in here, but Ma'am said that Ron Legler texted her that he was, in fact, watching us. Okay, let's move into the mayor's update. This is really exciting. Starting July 19th, Saturday, Orange Avenue between the Performing Arts Center and City Hall will be completely closed for three weeks while we create some pedestrian and roadway enhancements that will also allow the plaza from Deepak to blend in with the plaza from City Hall and create a space that ultimately we could close for concerts or different things in front of Deepak or in front of City Hall. So I encourage all travelers who use Orange Avenue to think about some alternative plans for the three weeks beginning July 19th. We, I'm just going to mention two items that are on the, note this, Commissioner Ings, I'm doing three little items here, okay? Not telling anybody what I had for breakfast.
No green beans?
Mayor, I was only going to do two, but I think I had more.
Okay. So I just want to point out B3, which is Orlando Walks, and we get a lot of commentary on the pedestrian thoroughfares and the safety of pedestrians throughout Central Florida. And for the most part, it doesn't really relate to the city of Orlando. It relates more to some of the outlying areas that have four-lane, undivided roadways that people attempt to cross. But in any event, we want to make our city one of the most pedestrian-friendly cities in all of America, and we have had more than $5 million in federal funds to invest in sidewalks in our program called Orlando Walks. The first phase was approximately 17 miles, and on today's agenda is a construction agreement for Phase Two, which will add 22 miles of new sidewalks in Orlando. Also, under the FPR agenda is an agreement with the city and the Orlando Housing Authority to renovate the playground and basketball court and build a new pavilion for the children at Citrus Square Apartments. We're using some CDBG funds, some additional support from the Orlando Housing Authority and from Commissioner Gray. And Commissioner Gray has supported the children and families at Citrus Square by organizing holiday and back-to-school events. Commissioner, we thank you for your commitment to the children in District One. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on items from the consent agenda and to update you on things of interest from their district. We change the order each week, and today Commissioner Tony Ortiz is leading off.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a little up, but I'm going to be quick. National Night Out, National Night Out Against Crimes kickoff. I want to thank Mr. Anael Hernandez and Georgina Pinedos from San Danos. They did a great job helping us, putting everything together. It was a great event. Deputy Chief Metzger, Deputy Chief Pigman, Fire Department Chief John Miller were there, Captain Orlando Rolone, and a bunch of police officers. The community was very happy, the place was packed. I can say enough about what a great event. I want to thank Ms. Georgina Butler from the Neighborhood Watch Program, Ms. Alicia Ramirez from Ola for being there, my liaison officer, Eddie Rosado, Anna, who helped us tremendously, and everyone else who was involved. That was a great event. I'd like to give thanks to Lakeview Meadows Community for their hospitality given to us during their annual picnic. We had a great time. SWAT team was there again, and they did a great job. Wayne, Mr. Officer Wayland and Bigelow did a great job, so please send my regards and thanks for the great job that they've been doing displaying our police department. Children's really enjoyed it. They had a good time. I want to congratulate Mr. William Diaz and the members of Casa Venezuela for the celebration of their Independence Day in July. They put up a great event. They subsequently moved to City Hall, and everything turned out great. They also fixed the bust of Simon Bolivar at Lake Yola Park. It looks great. So on Saturday, we had a football clinic at the Englewood Community Center hosted by Kevin Elliott of the Buffalo Bills. Great event. Over 65 kids attended the clinic and had a great time. I want to thank Mr. Randolph Holloman for planning the event, and of course, always following up. Great job. On Saturday, I also attended the 2014 Florida Neighborhood Conference. Orange County Commissioner Pete Clark gave a special recognition to the Azalea Park Leader League team or group. I would like to also commend Ms. Michelle Brennan and Ms. Susan Harris for representing the city so well, and all the staff that were there. Park of the Americas, Smith, Beth Kruger, and John Prun. I can say thank you enough. You guys are doing such a wonderful job. I know that the mayor posted, already posted on Facebook, that we're going to be doing a kickoff, the first canine park in the city of Orlando, official canine, I should say. We have other areas that have served very well, but the park is looking great. I not only want to invite all the commissioners, but people attending this council today, and those who are watching on TV to come to the Park of the Americas to start getting to see what we're going to be inaugurating by mid-September, hopefully, or the end of September. Am I right? Okay, good deal. And as a reminder to our Neighborhood Leaders Council members, we are having a meeting this Thursday at the Englewood Community Center, starting at 6:30. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor, and let me say that the fireworks in the fountain was great, as always, and what a wonderful touch to have the Philharmonic actually there in person. And I know Commissioner Sheehan will share a few things later on, but it was just really very well-tended. I think it was the largest crowd that we've ever had, and I appreciate that. Couple of things coming up. I know on July 5th, we had the Baldwin Park, and all the rain that avoided us on July 4th went over to Baldwin Park on July 5th, so we got through with that one that evening in a rain, in a little bit of rain, and it was great. Couple of things, and I just like a few things on the agenda I'd like to touch on. National Night Out's coming out. It's not too late for those communities in District Three to go ahead and get your reservations in, and we'd like to go ahead and start scheduling those right now. We've had as many as 18 or 19 parties every event that I've been here, and I want to make sure I try to get to everyone, and that just takes a well-orchestrated effort, and I appreciate everybody involved in that. Audbonne Park Garden District has celebrated Bastille Day, a little fundraiser they had over there this past week. That was great. And then, of course, the Ivanhoe Village and downtown Greedo received community grants from the United Arts of Central Florida. Let me touch on two things. Mayor, thank you for the comments about the sidewalks. I have talked to our staff and want to encourage everyone that was involved. Last time, we had a couple additional staff that really took on this and began to own it. It saved a lot of the issues that we have had in the past, and I want to encourage our staff to continue to do that, and they intend on doing that. But that communication was very important last time, the first time that we did this, and I want to make sure that we continue that emphasis in communication. The second thing is on C10, we're going to be approving today the minutes from the MPB for the Princeton project. I see Jim and Pat here. I appreciate you all being here. Let me make a couple of quick comments. I have been very impressed with how this process has been moved forward in a way in which everyone has had a chance to be able to share their opinion, but not do it in a way that seems to be not community-building. And I think a lot has to do with Pat and with Jim and your willingness to listen to some of the concerns that have been expressed. There'll be some other opportunities for those people who are listening, that there'll be the community and public input. I know that the developer is having a meeting next week to listen to some other design options and listen to some ideas about design of the project. But I think it's moving forward in a way that I think complements not only the community, but also complements by how it got there, and I appreciate so much how you all have accomplished that task. We'll be approving that today, and we'll see the PD and the ordinance, those things coming forward in the next couple of months. And it's a good project. You know, it's in dealing with a developer and dealing with the fact that we don't own the land, we don't get complete control, but I think we've gotten a good partner in this project, and I think it's going to be a good project for the community. So I appreciate you all's effort, and I just wanted to make that comment. And Mayor, that's all that I have on the agenda, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thank you, Mayor Dyer, and fireworks at the fountain was a lot of fun, and I got to count down, for the first time in 14 years, I got to count down the fireworks. That was a very big thrill for me, and I got to do it with the CEO of Dryrite, and we're both UCF graduates, and we managed to be able to count down from 10 and got it right. So thank you very much for that thrill. That was a, that was a, sorry you were out of town, but that was really a dream come true for me. Thank you very much, because that's my lake and very proud of everything that we do there. On the agenda today, item B1, I think the partnership between the city of Orlando and Orange County Public Schools for Conserv II Property for Use in Agriculture Education is just great. I used to be an agriculture executive before I came here, and I really think it's wonderful that we're doing that partnership. On item B5, I'm glad to see that we're using a local company, Workscape, for the Performing Arts Center furniture. Again, a lot of times we forget about our local businesses, and this is also a wonderful way to keep the money in our community. On item C9, the MPB minutes, very happy to see as well the existing non-conforming improvements added to approval by the zoning official by modification of standards. This is going to make it a lot easier for businesses and residents to come into compliance with our code. That was just a great thing. Item D2 today, the Orange County Cultural Facilities Grant for the Lake Yola Amphitheater, a wonderful partnership with Orange County. And we're going to get a new soundboard, so when we do events like the fireworks at the fountain, we can hear what's happening when the Philharmonic is playing. So that's good to see as well. And on item H1, this is certainly something very near and dear to my heart, on the pedestrian bicycle safety and crosswalks and sidewalks. I mean, I think this is job one, safety for our residents, and delighted to see that we're going to be putting in 22 miles of new sidewalks. And that's all I have to add, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Five. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, sir. On July 2nd, I was able to introduce my 100-day plan to the District Five residents. We had closed over 200 constituents that came out, and they are eager to assist with, it's actually a community action plan where all the community is involved in it, so I'm excited about that, laying that foundation. And I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for holding a reception for me to introduce me to the leaders here in our city. It was so warm and inviting, and everyone was really encouraging, so that was nice, and I really appreciate that. It made me feel like I'm at home. Also, what I did this month, which is very important there in my district, I partnered- Also, what I did this month, which is very important, there in my district, I partnered with Second Harvest Food Bank, in which they have apprenticeship program there for culinary arts, because I do realize everyone in my district isn't going to college, so I want to make sure that they are, they do have some type of skills and hope. And what we're doing with that, each month, we're going to have food handouts in certain parts of my district, but there will be also empowerment seminars to go along with that. So I'm excited about their partnership. I met with all the youth throughout our, our city here at the community centers and met with their directors last week and their staff, and was briefed on all the different programs that's available here at the city. And with my 100-day plan, Marcia's helping me with it. I don't have to reinvent the wheel. Most things are right in place, so I really thank the city and what you've been doing. So now I'm just going to try to make sure that I implement all the great things that you're doing here. I met over with the rural, at a Rural Future Conference with some futurists, and that was pretty exciting, and we were talking about the future of African-Americans in urban America, and I got some tools to bring back to my community. Also met with Senator Geraldine Thompson, House Representative Bruce Antarn, and House Representative Bryant Nelson this weekend. In Orlando Health, they did a healthy summer kickoff there in the Perrymore area at Z, El Raleigh Park, and there were hot dogs and hamburgers, but most of all, Orlando Health was there letting the community know about healthy living. This Sunday, I partnered also with Emma Soulfood there on Robinson Street in Perrymore, the Old Johnson Diner, to where we will be feeding my children in District 5 every second and fourth Sunday, Sunday meals. So I'll attend church with them, different organizations, and then I'll take them out to dinner, and they had their own little place mat. They took orders, they ordered from a menu, and I'm pretty excited about that. Oftentimes, some of the kids, as Commissioner Stewart knows, because he's partnered with DECO and has brought me on board, to where our children sometimes don't even have a Sunday meal. Some of them haven't gone to restaurants, so I think this is something that they enjoyed. They thanked us. It was about 30 kids, and I didn't have to use much money out of my budget. Emma Foods, Soulfood actually partnered with me, and they, they ate most of the cost. I only had to pay $170 to feed 30 kids. A full meal, it was three, three entrees on the, three meats, three vegetables. It was just fabulous, and it meant so, so much to me, so I'm just blessed to be here and, and help. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 6. Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, mayor, and Chief Miller. I just want to make sure that we do recognize the Orlando Firefighter of the Year, firefighter EMT Anthony Williams. And just to let you know, too, he was recognized at the Orlando Predators' home game June the 12th of this year at UCF Arena as a hometown hero. So he got great recognition, and so congratulations to firefighter Anthony Williams for his success. Also, Reggie Colman of Communications is heading back to Boston with his wife, Dr. Colman, and family, and we wish you well, Reggie. And thank you, Michelle Brennan, and Communications for farewell party for Reggie Colman at the Aloft Hotel, the old OUC building. And thank you, Mayor Dyer, and Commissioners Sheen and Hill for being there, too. That showed a lot of support, and of course, we had Reginald McGill there as well, and Frank Billingsley, Chief of Staff, for the mayor's office there at that event. And we celebrated the 50th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act here in Orlando City Hall Rotunda. Thank you, Mayor Dyer, for that event, and, and also my colleagues, fellow colleagues, the city council, and the Orlando Chapter 57 Board, Review Board, and the mayor's MLK Commission, and the Holocaust Memorial Resource and Education Center, and Florida A&amp;M University, and WUCFTV for your support of this event as well. This was a very well-attended event, and a very special thanks to St. Mark Choir or Corral. They, they are in District 6, and so it was a great representation, and this was a great event for us. But, you know, our fight for civil rights is far from over, and we still have to fight to save our history and save our iconic and historical places and peoples and things within our communities. And we also have to continue our fight for economic development in our communities and in our neighborhoods. On July 22nd, at 6:00 to 8:30 PM, District 6 will be having its National Night Out kick-off event, and Police Chief John Mina is, is joining me with this event. Thank you, sir, for your efforts here. This will be held at Eagles Nest Park at 5165 Metro West Boulevard, and we're looking to have Sheila Ray Charles, the daughter of the legendary musician Ray Charles, and the Freedom Ring Band to perform for us on that night. And I'd like to also say thank you to Universal Studios and OUC WellCare, Sedano's, Orlando Health, Target, and, and of course, the city of Orlando for all of your help and support in this event, and we're looking for great things from the police department. Our homeowners associations will be involved, and they're going to be greatly represented there. Then also for National Night Out celebration, we're going to have a National Night Out Women's Self-Defense Summit, and that's going to be held July 24th from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at the Dr. James R. Smith Neighborhood Center at 1723 Bruton Boulevard. And I'd like to say thank you to Kia Shafri for starting off with this kickoff event, but she has since left the Orlando Police Department and the city of Orlando, and Georgiana Butler has stepped in to continue to help move this project along, and we're looking for a great time and a great event. Thank you, mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. And District 1, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to briefly comment on Agenda Item D1 and follow up on your comments, mayor. Thank you. I'd like to take a lot of credit for it, but as most things around here, the staff deserves most of the credit. And this project was challenged a couple of times, primarily with funding, so I want to thank Deb Gerard and Owen Henry for helping with, to, to get the money in place, and then, of course, Lisa Henry and Debraika and her staff with the planning, and finally, Amy Iannaca and Legal for putting it all together. But if not for their efforts, you've probably got 30 or 40 kids that don't have a lot of sunshine in their life, and this will really do it for them. So I wanted to thank them and our friends at Orlando Housing. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second. How about that? Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And so the motion carries.
A new tradition.
Anybody want to leave now? You may. Not you, Charles. Okay, let's see what we have. Why don't we recess the city council meeting and call to order the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting for the purpose of accepting meeting minutes from the advisory council on June the 11th, 2014. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. That is all of the business. FJ, before the NID. Yes, Kyle? Okay. Then we will recon, let's see, we'll adjourn the NID meeting and we'll reconvene the city council meeting. We'll go to hearings, order to second reading. Madam Clerk, number one.
Ordinance number 2013-63, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the land development regulations for the Orlando Medical Plaza Plan Development, generally located north of Fernwood Street, south and west of East Copeland Drive, and east of South Orange Avenue, and comprised of 2.1 acres, more or less, amending the development plan, development program, landscaping plan, architectural regulations, and other land development regulations of the plan development, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public who would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And so the motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 2014-24, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Kirkman Road and the Florida Turnpike, and comprised of three acres of land, more or less, as planned development district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And so the motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 2014-22, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate certain land generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Kirkman Road and the Florida Turnpike, and comprised of three acres of land, more or less, as industrial on the city's official future land use maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? So the motion carries. Ordinance is first read, number one.
Ordinance number 2014-26, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located north of East Orlando Street, east of DePaul Avenue, south of East Winter Park Street, and west of Musclewhite Avenue, and comprised of 0.15 acres of land, more or less, as planned development district with the traditional city and Wakava overlay districts on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public who would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And so the motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today.
No general appearances.
And we have no general appearances, so we will stand adjourned. Should we move on?